Hello. Very, very, I'm going to interrupt all your friendly chatter here. And I know it's nice to see each other in these community events. And it's very, very, we're very, very happy to have everyone who's joined us here in the chambers this evening for our city commission business meeting. So I am calling to order this business meeting, the Kalamazoo City Commission for Monday, November 20th, 2023. First order of business is roll call. Clerk Boiling.
Commissioner Cooney.
Present.
Commissioner Decker.
Present.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Present.
Commissioner Pradel.
Present.
Commissioner Wilson.
Present.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Boiling. For our opening ceremony tonight, we are blessed to have Bishop Daniel Cunningham here with us from the Empowerment Center. He's going to provide an invocation for our meeting this evening. I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. It's my honor to be here. Let's go before the Father. Father, we thank you for this opportunity and for this forum for us to come together to be guided by your principles. I pray for your wisdom and sensitivity upon this group of leaders, for proper direction for our neighborhood, communities, and city. Let us walk in the courage to discern and react against any political influences that only benefit selected populations of people. But allow us to take advantage to bridge to all people regardless of their economic and social background. Even when it's not the most popular decision, Lord, I pray that we make the decisions based on ethic, moral, and biblical principles for our community. I speak equality, equity, and justice for all, and we be beacon of light for other cities to follow. Father, I pray for this city commission and that they leave a legacy of being the commission that will have a voice of action to the underserved and will distribute resources not just to the nucleus of Kalamazoo only, but to the less popular areas that need the resources. I speak your choicest blessing upon their family and upon each of them in your son's name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Bishop Cunningham. I don't see any other elected officials here right now who's going to recognize any elected guests who are here. Not seeing anything. So at this time on our agenda is when we have proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. And the first one is Family Court Awareness Month. That's going to be read by Vice Mayor Hess. And I believe someone's here from the Family Court to accept that. Is that right? Please come forward, and I'll come down with a resolution.
A proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month, November 2023. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, F C A M C, is to increase the awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change in the family court system for the conservatively estimated 58,000 children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas, the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of empirically-based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, including emotional, psychologically, psychological, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, coercive control, and post-separation abuse for judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas, the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value. And whereas, the mission of the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. Such research is critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interests of children. This research includes the adverse childhood experiences study, co-principal investigator Vincent Felitti, Kaiser Permanente CDC, the Child Custody Evaluators' beliefs about domestic abuse allegations, principal investigator Daniel Saunders from the University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and child custody outcomes in cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations, principal investigator Joan S. Meyer from the G W Law School, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, I, Jean Hess, on behalf of David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month in the City of Kalamazoo. We encourage all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa, and I'm a member of Protective Parents Michigan. Six years, three months, and 18 days ago, I lost three of my four children. I would like to thank the City of Kalamazoo for acknowledging that child safety should be the priority in family courts and decision-making for custody. Some people don't understand the catch-22 of domestic violence. Women are encouraged to leave their abusive situations, but when they have children, they are thrust into family court, which seems to have no understanding of domestic abuse, which can put their children in harm's way and perpetuate ongoing trauma. In fact, women are often told by their lawyers not to mention abuse, as they may lose custody of their children if they do. And that is what happened to me. In fact, abuse is not understood or believed by the courts. And as we read in your proclamation, 58,000 children in the U.S. each year are ordered into unsupervised contact with physically and sexually abusive parents. Abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful 70% of the time. Children are three times as likely to be shot at home, more so than at a mass school shooting. And one child dies every six days amid custody fights and family court cases. Since 2008, 37 Michigan children have been murdered during divorce and custody battles. The solution is to enact Kayden's Law in the state of Michigan. Kayden's Law is focused on prioritizing child protection over parents' rights. Kayden's Law was named for Kayden Men Cuso, a seven-year-old girl murdered by her father during a court-ordered, unsupervised parenting time after court ignored her father's history of abuse. Kayden's Law was already passed by Congress in the Violence Against Women's Act, but it would provide funding for our state to educate judges and other family court professionals about all types of abuse, including coercive control, emotional, and psychological abuse that leave the invisible scars. Judges would need to consider the past history of abuse when making custody decisions. Children would not be removed from a protective parent's home or be forced to live with an abusive parent. One morning, six years, three months, and 18 days ago, I said goodbye to my children and left for family court. On that day, I was handcuffed and held while the courts gave permission for my home to be broken into and the children to be taken. We had a long history of child abuse on record and abusive me. We're trying to shed light on the failures within family court, not in a bitter way, but so that changes can be made to ensure that knowledge about all types of abuse can be recognized and that so, and so child safety is always the priority in the future for child custody decisions. Our children and their lives are literally dependent on the courts becoming educated on these issues. Two years ago, I was granted access to my home where my ex-husband was allowed to live long after we had been divorced. When I got there, I found the walls barricaded, the doors barricaded, to a section of the home that apparently the children had relegated him to for their own protection. Later, I was given permission to get my belongings out of there that I'd been separated from for over three and a half years, because on that day when I left for family court, all I had was my car keys and my car, and that was it. In the box, when I got home, I found this message from my daughter. "Mom, I love you so much. I don't know if I will see you again until I'm 18. I'm scared. I need support from people." Kayden's Law would give that support to children like mine. I want to thank again the City of Kalamazoo for your support in affirming the proclamation. Thank you.
So Commissioners, as you're aware, and all of those who are in the chamber this evening, we normally don't add items to our agenda without them being part of the initial published agenda, but we are adding a proclamation this evening. And that proclamation really occurred in, in short order relative to a very concerning and serious event that happened just a day ago here in Kalamazoo. So we, our next proclamation is a stand against antisemitism, and it's going to be read by Commissioner Decker. And I'll ask anyone who would like to come forward here to accept this proclamation, please come up now. Thank you.
State of Michigan, United States of America proclamation, Stand Against Antisemitism, November 20th, 2023. Whereas antisemitism, including harassment based on actual or perceived Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identify and affiliation, or faith, remains a persistent, pervasive, and disturbing problem in American society that undermines democracy. And whereas Jews continue to be a targeted minority in the United States and are consistently victimized by incidents of hate, which are increasing at an alarming rate. And whereas, the deadliest attack in Jewish-American history took place on October 27th, 2018, at the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, killing 11 worshippers and injuring several more. The attack was followed by deadly attacks near San Diego, California, in Jersey City, New Jersey, and in Muncie, New York. And whereas, according to a recent American Jewish Committee survey, one in every four American Jews has been the victim of antisemitism in the last year. And the same survey reports that many American Jews have changed their behavior, limiting their activities and concealing their Jewishness due to concerns about antisemitism. And whereas, the Anti-Defamation League, A D L, recorded a total of 312 antisemitic incidents in the United States between October 7th and October 2023. During the same period in 2022, A D L received preliminary reports of 64 incidents. And whereas, the A D L reports 54 antisemitic incidents on college campuses in the United States between October 7th to the 23rd, 2023. And whereas, on November 18th, 2023, antisemitic vandalism occurred here in Kalamazoo, following many other reported incidents of antisemitism across the state of Michigan. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, I, Kiana Decker, on behalf of David F. Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, do hereby condemn all forms of antisemitism in the City of Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo Home is not safe for Jews. I love Kalamazoo, but I feel scared every day now since Hamas attacks Israel. It broke my heart to look at the swastika on the Howlers' home and on their temple that they have. The good part was that everybody worked together helping paint it and was there in complete support. I talked to these K College students, 12 of them, and they are afraid to leave their dorms. They are harassed on campus, and the, the president calls it that people have the right to say what they want. They have the right to harass you. They have the right to wish you dead. They have the right to say, "From the river to the sea," which means, by the way, "From the Jordan River to the Mediterranean Sea, we will get rid of Jews." That is the Hamas theme, and that is allowed to say on campus, because it's okay to say that Jews should be killed. Our synagogue is locked. We fear we have to have police in our parking lots in order to have services. I grew up around concentration camp survivors. My grandmother was, was a victim, along with my great-aunts of Russian pogroms. It was regular to see people at the Oak Park Park Pool with concentration camp numbers on their arms. It was normal to hear about my friends' parents having night terrors. It was normal to hear stories of their family murdered. This is what I grew up with. This is what many, many Jews grew up with. This is what our tribe grew up with and lived with. My grandparents said, "You can't trust anyone who isn't Jewish." I argued that was wrong. I am learning that people I thought were my friends are not. I am learning that people want to harm me because I am Jewish. My tribe is harmed. My tribe is unsafe. I am unsafe in my home. In this community, I have served on almost every single committee for this, for this city commission. I have fought for Kalamazoo. I have fought for the Kalamazoo Mall. I have strongly advocated for LGBTQIA, women's rights, and Black rights, only to be kicked in the face by many peaceful protesters. My husband and I went to the Spill the Wine benefit. This is a group that works for Black people and Jews to work against discrimination. I watched as a movie was shown with a rabbi walking arm-in-arm with MLK, walking arm-in-arm in the protest in Selma, Alabama. I listened to a concentration camp survivor. There was 1,000 people in the room and lots and lots of police officers, because we are threatened. Yesterday, my daughter begged me not to speak here, because she lost one parent. My husband adopted her, and she fears that I will be harmed. She fears I will be harmed because I have received death threats. She fears I will be harmed because, three days after the Hamas attack, I received my first death threat. The day of the Women's March, which I emceed, I received another death threat, which was a phone call which said Jews can be shot onstage, and that is here in Kalamazoo by a man who is a peaceful protester, but he now lives in California and he's protesting there. The FBI knows who he is. Remember, Jews can be shot onstage. Can you imagine my fear? My daughter spoke in that rally. Can you imagine what I felt like, how scared I was? Gee, you were at that rally. Um, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mass. Sorry. Um, the FBI has identified the person. He's a man in his 50s who has done much worse things to others. He attends a lot of protests. My husband and I have had our business threatened. In reviews, one of them says that, "Don't go there. They are Zionists, and they kill Palestinians." I must have missed the moment I did that. Um, I also want to tell you that I offered this 12 kids that I talked to to come to my house for matzoh ball soup, because they are feeling unsafe, unwelcome, and harmed in Kalamazoo. We could go Saturday. I wanted to go to the bank. You know, it's very unsafe now to walk on the Kalamazoo Mall, because they have protesters there. I was wearing my Pittsburgh shirt, and two of them stuck a sign in my face, "From the river to the sea, we will kill Jews." So I do not feel safe in Kalamazoo. I feel scared. I feel scared for my tribe. I feel scared for my family. And I've never felt scared here, and I've never felt that this wasn't my home. But I feel that way now. Sorry. I thought I was going to try and do this and not cry. I didn't make it to the bank, completely harassed. Kalamazoo is a very unsafe place for Jews. The hate here is unbelievable. Look at what they did to the Howlers, some of the nicest people you will ever meet. I fear our synagogue being shot up. I know most of these people on the commission, and you guys go to church. Can you imagine sitting in there, being afraid, feeling that you're going to be harmed? I never experienced this in Kalamazoo before. I wanted to believe my grandparents were wrong. But you know what? I, I thank you for doing this proclamation. But when I spoke with the FBI agents, they said loud and clear that they have never seen hatred like this towards the Jews, that there are FBI agents that are pulled off of their cases. I belong to a Mother's Antisemitism group about college, because my daughter's going to be an MSW student next year, and I am afraid for her. I am afraid for all these kids on campus that are being harmed. There is way more than 54 cases, because if you look at the, at the, the Mothers Against Antisemitism college website, there are thousands and thousands of parents that are reporting that their kids are threatened, harmed, afraid to leave their rooms. What kind of college experience are they having? What is happening to our community? And it is happening here at Kalamazoo College. People need to move forward. Thank you for doing this proclamation.
Good evening. I am Rabbi Harvey Spivak, now retired, formerly of the Congregation of Moses. In the 35 years that I have lived here, I've always seen that Kalamazoo tries to preserve and protect the dignity of all its citizens. That is a strong and persistent value that we share. It's a goal we always strive for. And that is why antisemitism and all pernicious and dangerous forms of prejudice is something that has no place in Kalamazoo. So the proclamation is something that expresses the best values that we have here in our city. The proclamation is something that all of us can get behind and be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming this evening. Thank you. Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is the adoption of the formal agenda. Are there any items that are on the consent agenda? Are there any items that are on the consent agenda that anyone in the commission would like to have moved to the regular agenda? H. See none. Is there anyone in the audience here in the chambers who would like to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? See no one. The agenda stands. Next, communications. Manager Risma.
None this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Risma. Now is the opportunity for public comments. We will start with individuals who are here in the chambers. Just as a reminder, the comment time is three minutes. Please state your name and where you live in the city. And after we have finished public comments, for those of you who are here in the chambers, there'll be opportunity to call in with a public comment. And that number is 888-382-9556. Is there anyone in the chambers who would like to make a comment?
Good evening. Noreen Wofford, Kalamazoo City resident, 430 West Ransom, 35-year resident, 10 years homeownership. I stand here tonight conflicted and confused. As I welcome the, the idea of neighbors, I am confused as to why you Mayor Anderson and Mary Baucham told me that I need not worry about anyone claiming eminent domain, and it is time for, for a makeover on my home. While Mattie Jordan Woods has told me that the city told her that she could, she could remove trees and fence lines as needed for the NACD Ransom Street single home, single-family homes. I'm conflicted through, though I cannot afford to have my property surveyed according to the Claims, Deed, and Property Taxes legal description, a 42-by-155-foot rectangular parcel is on file with the Register of Deeds and the City Assessors Office is what, you know, is what Mr. Blackmore, may he rest in peace, county treasurers in the city, you know, say that is what I pay taxes for. Um, my question is, is who the city that told her, Ms. Jordan Woods, that it was okay to encroach onto 430 West Ransom and remove trees and fence lines due to the mistakes made by surveyors and excavator crews? Seeing that I have not nor ever agreed to loan, give, sell, or rent any of the property for siding, paint, or privacy fence with the NACD, I'm confused. I have had to deal with trespasses around my home, theft, and threats to my support pet dog. She's basically my family, my workers next door. I wanted to know, are you mayor, included in the city? Or they that told Ms. Jordan Woods, speaking of, when she says, "The city said she could remove the trees and fence," or they who said, "Leave my home as it is"? Um, I, I just, it's just become a real big, you know, problem. They say I need to get a surveyor. The legal description says 5969 original platte, the east 13 feet of Lot 4, Block 32. Also, the west 29 feet of the south, 155.1 feet of a 65-foot strip of land, formerly Cooley, Cooley Street, between blocks 32 and 33 of said platte. Also, south one half of a vacated alley lying north of and adjacent there, too, is, is the description. I'm just conflicted and confused. I'm a city resident. I've helped. I, I'm not saying that the North Side Association for Community Development doesn't do good things on the north side. But when it started, before it started, I asked that she not, that she leave a wall up. There used to be a-
Yes, I'm sorry. That's three minutes. Yes. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of this opportunity for public comment? Please come forward. Mr. Lee, go ahead.
Hello, thank you. My name's Mark Lee. I'm the owner of Better World Builders. We're located at 985 Jackson in the Edison neighborhood. Uh, we are a building performance, energy efficiency company. I'm here today to, first of all, thank all the commissioners for your service for our community. I know this, this takes a lot of, a lot of your time and your effort and your heart, and I really appreciate you guys putting that forward for, for this community. Um, also, congratulations to our newly elected and re-elected commissioners and, and vice chair and mayor. I'm, I'm here today because I wanted to recognize the award that was part of the consent agreement for, consent agenda for the Kalamazoo Alternative Housing. Um, I had the honor of, of inspecting, this is 1211 Douglas Avenue, a 20-unit apartment on Douglas Street. I had a, I was asked to help assist in inspecting that building and to help identify some energy efficiency opportunities. And I appreciate this council's approval of that project to do the energy retrofits for, at 1211 Douglas. Basically, I wanted to share with you, I, I can see Kalamazoo being known as the most sustainable place in the state of Michigan. And I think it's partly through visionary people who are on this commission who also could see us being recognized for that, or recognized for so many other things. So, why not be known as the most sustainable city in the state of Kalam, in the state of Michigan? The, this grant will help this, these 20 rep, 20 apartment units in this place. It'll help with making them more healthy and efficient. It'll help them make, um, more comfortable and helping increase the indoor air quality. And I just wanted to kind of finish it by saying, reminding us, um, healthy homes equals healthy people. Healthy people equal healthy community. So, thank you very much for your service and, and your time today.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Hello, I'm Jody. I live in the city of Kalamazoo. I'm, I've been expressing about the dump over on Cork Street. I haven't been able to get around or fly over or do any of the big stuff that needs to be done. But life starts by God's amazing grace. Somebody's got to start somewhere. That food, that place needs, the food needs to be separated from, from the trash. And, and there's, and the dumpsters in a whole new route put out, like these motels and, and large living environments should have cases where you can dump your clothes and not clothes go in the dumpster with the trash with the, you know, there's ways to make people, or people can comply with making things easier to dispose of, that you could burn the stuff down. It could be landed over land, you know, trees that are been burned down, ground that's been burnt. There, it has to start off, you have to start off with a whole new place. It's going to have to start all over again. I, I've been having troubles. My computer's been ripped off. I'm having family issues, my poor cat, my emotional support pack's just being abused in many ways. It's, it's hard to concentrate when you have things like that going on. I'm not exactly sure why, but I'm trying to get things taken care of. Anyway, if I, you know, like the plastic, back to the recycling, and, and if we had disposables where everybody dumped their plastic bottles into a whole different bin and it can be crushed down, I mean, all that would save so much space to be able to recycle it and reuse it and instead of it just piling up and, and just collecting all the filth from food in between and just little things like rusty tools, all these places, these, like tool places where they have Harvard freights, people could recycle their tools, put them in a toolbox, and the truck can go and dispose of that. You just have to, I would write up more if I had more time, more means to, like a computer. That way, I could put it on the front desk of you guys's place and, and you could look at it and maybe get some ideas yourself, or somebody gets some kind of encouragement. My apologies, I'm not put together so well, but it would be better if I had a computer. But anyway, thank you for the recognition, and I'll keep on trying. As far as the spaceship-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of this speaking opportunity?
Hi, my name is Sean Espinoza, and I'm a citizen of Kalamazoo. I came today because I'm still dealing with a housing situation, and it seems that you guys don't seem to care. And this is why so many people are houseless in Kalamazoo. There are so many people that sit on this board that have something to do with housing, and we have a housing crisis. And it seems like what we ask or what we want or what we need really doesn't matter. If it doesn't benefit you, it doesn't matter. We as Kalamazoo citizens, we deserve better. When we are houseless or dealing with housing disparities or housing issues, and we have children, they, they go through it as well, and it's not fair. I have done everything that I can, and luckily I was able to get another place to stay, but these landlords do not care. They're able to treat their tenants like any type of way. Even going through this, every week, that landlord has been coming to harass me, not to fix anything, that he has not worked the whole time upstairs since I've lived there. The shower has not worked since August, and every week they come and they harass me. And I'm reaching out and asking for help. I'm just one of many situations that are going on. Many of you have house, something to do with housing, or sit on boards, or deal with that. Where is the help? Don't, don't reach out and be like, "Oh, here's this and that, and then that's it." How is that helping? How is that helping? It's not helping. I'm very able to navigate through many systems, but this housing system is a joke. There is no help. Everybody say, "Go there, go there." It's the city making sure the city doesn't look bad. So, why is it when a tenant moves in, there's nobody inspecting it to make sure it's livable? But then we're, we're told that we have to pay rent. These houses look like trash from 1920, but we're paying thousands of dollars for rent? How is that? Why are y'all not out here making sure that these houses are livable? Our children live in these houses. So, what are you doing besides sitting here, taking notes and acting like you care because you don't? Because if you did, y'all would have been to care of this housing crisis. Y'all have millions of dollars, and what are y'all doing with them? We deserve better. Hold yourself accountable for the things that you're not doing. My son is seven years old, and guess what? He deserves better. I shouldn't have had to move twice this year. David Anderson, put your big boy pants on and do something besides look there and seem like you care, but you don't because if you did, you have a lot of housing background. That's why Interfaith looks like that. Do better as a mayor because guess what? We have a new city commission up there. The rest of y'all can be replaced with our votes, just like he was.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to speak? A reminder, you have three minutes. Please state your name and where you live in the city.
My name is Rabbi Morochai Haller. I live at 504 Sprague Avenue, Kalamazoo, Michigan, 49006. And you just, you read before that there was a hate crime, there was vandalizing of my, of our home, of our Chabad house. So, obviously, it's very disturbing, um, on a personal level, but also such as me. I don't, we don't take it personally more, you know, it's impacts, the hate against Jewish people. So, it's very disturbing. At the same time, obviously, I would like to thank the city of Kalamazoo, the police department, um, you know, at the same time, there's a lot, a lot of good people. Police departments try to do what they can to try to get to the bottom there, to try to secure things. And the neighbors and the outpouring of the members of the community, well, Jewish and neighbors, and everyone is very much appreciated it, and it's, you know, touches us very deeply. And there's an idea, like we've often said, one of the things that was actually sprayed on was the menorah. And we often say, "This is an act of darkness." Unfortunately, there's a lot of darkness in the world today of evil and hate. And the way that we combat darkness is not by fighting it, but by making lights, by creating a light. And I, an act of light, an act of goodness, of kindness. So, we've had a lot of those as well. So, I wanted to propose maybe an act of kindness, goodness, of light that we do together as a community, being that this happened with Chabad. So, we'd like to do an event that's coming in a couple of weeks will be Hanukkah. And we thank the mayor for coming the past couple of years to attend our Hanukkah event. But we wanted to have a Hanukkah event to invite the entire Jewish community, and the entire community, the wider Kalamazoo, whoever would like to come and support, should be in solidarity to, you know, to strengthen light and goodness. And we'd like to propose that the city get involved, yeah, make it also a city event, have a representation from the city. And that will be December 7th. We can discuss the details. So, and once again, I'd like to, I thank the, thank the city for doing whatever they, for the different parts of doing what they have done. And may, may we all increase in our acts of goodness and kindness. The more acts of goodness and kindness that we do brings more light, and it brings the ultimate light, which we believe, and many believe the coming of the Messiah, the ultimate redemption. So, may we herald the time of the ultimate light. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Messer, city resident and rank my vote volunteer. We would like to thank the 6,486 people who voted for our ranked choice voting charter amendment. Your overwhelming 71% support sends a strong message to the Michigan Legislature and Secretary of State that we understand what ranked choice voting is and want its benefits in future elections. Our proposal's also passed in East Lansing and Royal Oak. Voters in five Michigan cities have now amended their charters for ranked choice voting: Ferndale, Ann Arbor, Kalamazoo, East Lansing, and Royal Oak. In addition, ranked choice voting has been used in East Point, Michigan since 2019. Also on Election Day, voters in Minnetoka, Minnesota reaffirmed their support for ranked choice voting with 59% approval, four points higher than the 55% support it received in 2020. In East Hampton, Massachusetts, 62% of voters approved an expanded use of RCV to multi-winner elections, six points higher than the 56% support it received in 2019 for single winner elections. So, ranked choice voting won in all five cities where it was on the ballot in the United States. According to Fair Vote, ranked choice voting has won in 27 city ballot measures in a row. On November 7, a number of cities held elections using ranked choice voting. In Portland, Maine, there were six candidates for mayor. A full five rounds of instant runoff were conducted the following morning. Signature News Maine reported that, quote, "They didn't have to wait long. The results were calculated live in seconds by computer." The Portland Press Herald reported that more than 46% of registered voters in the city cast ballots. That was more than two and a half times the 17.4% turnout in Kalamazoo. In 2024, there will be statewide ballot questions for ranked choice voting in Oregon and Nevada. In November 2026, we're hoping to have a statewide proposal on the ballot in Michigan. In 2024, we're hoping to have more charter amendments on the ballot in other Michigan cities, including Grand Rapids and Lansing. To keep up to date on our plans and how you can help, please visit our website at rankmyvote.org and click the Stay Informed button. That's rankmyvote.org, where my is M.I., the postal abbreviation for Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a comment during this public comment period? See no one. Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, is anybody called in?
Hi, go ahead. You're live at the Kalamazoo City Commission, public comment.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead. You're live at the city commission.
Oh, hi. I was, I was just calling. I'm a resident here in Kalamazoo, Michigan. And I was just calling to, I wanted some clarity on abandoned cars in the city. I had called about one that has been sitting now, going on four months on a flat. And, um, when I followed up, they said that the car was illegally parked. So, I wanted some clarity on what constitutes an abandoned car. I did call down to the, um, Kalamazoo Police Department- I did call down to the Kalamazoo Police Department Operations Division and left a message, but I haven't heard from them either. But I've tried to find out, but I just want to let you know that I was looking for some clarity on abandoned cars here in the city. Thank you very much.
That was the only call?
Thank you, DCM Chamberlain. I appreciate your work on this. Next on our agenda then with, is the consent agenda, which is G. Mayor Gerisma.
The following items are presented for approval. First is the approval of a contract supplemental and change order with AT&amp;T for Centrex service in the amount of $15,000. Next is the approval of a professional services agreement with the Foster Group for utility rate financial services in the amount of $100,000. Next is the approval of a contract supplemental with Corby Energy Services Incorporated for storm sewer rehabilitation by lining in the amount of $116,090. Next is the approval of the cooperative purchase of playground equipment for Southside Park for Game Time Sinclair Recreation through the M-Parks statewide program funding initiative grant in the amount of $254,995.48. Next is the approval of a contract with Hall Builders LLC for public services back T-Lab renovations in the amount of $209,498. Next is the approval of a contract with Lakeland Asphalt for paving at Riverside Cemetery in Water Station 25 in the amount of $221,597.47. Next is the approval of a professional services agreement with Peerless Midwest Company for well rehabilitation and associated maintenance in the amount of $268,350. Next is the approval of a three-year contract with PCI Municipal Services LLC to manage the city parking system in the amount of $297,000. Next is the approval of a cooperative purchase with West Michigan International LLC for two HV 613 chassis in the amount of $309,747.60. Next is the adoption of a resolution authorizing a change in the street lighting contract for Ransom Street from Burdick Street to Westenge Avenue. Next is the adoption of two pilot resolutions approving a payment in lieu of taxes for the creation of 70 affordable housing units restricted to citizens aged, senior citizens aged 55 or older, located at 108 East Frank Street, 128 East Frank Street, 121 East North Street, 131 East North Street, 729 North Edward Street, 713 North Edward Street, 709 North Edward Street, 135 East North Street, 730 North Burdick Street, 724 North Burdick Street, 129 East North Street, 702 North Edward Street, 708 North Edward Street and 125 East North Street pursuant to Section 35-4 of the Kalamazoo City Code. Next is the approval of amendments to the fiscal year 2023 budget totaling $4,238,306 in additional revenue and $6,307,050 in additional expenses. Next is the approval of the allocation of up to $30,000 from the City Commission Initiatives Fund to purchase a passenger van for the Kalamazoo Police Athletic League to transport youth to and from programming. Next is the approval of an agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation for a grant in the amount of $50,000 to support the development of a citywide economic development strategy. Next is the approval of a grant agreement with Kalamazoo Alternative Housing Incorporated for $198,000 to complete energy efficiency retrofit improvements at Douglas Apartments. Next is the authorization for the city attorney to settle a sewer backup claim with Mike and Sarah Garces in the amount of, related to the property at 1521 Southern Avenue in the amount of $45,866.21. Next is the approval of an easement for Consumers Energy at 535 West Patterson Street to improve the reliability of the circuit along Cooley and North Streets. Next is the approval of the mayor's appointment of Sharda Sims to the Civil Rights Board for a term expiring on March 31, 2025. Next is the approval of the following appointments and reappointments to the Water System Advisory Council. The appointment of Taylor Cole for a term expiring on December 31, 2025. The reappointment of Sidney Ellis for a term expiring on December 31, 2026. The appointment of Michael Evans for a term expiring on December 31, 2025. The appointment of Lucas Poles for a term expiring on December 31, 2024. And the reappointment of Nancy Stoddard for a term expiring on December 31, 2026. And the reappointment of Tom Wheat for a term expiring on December 31, 2024. And that's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mayor Gerisma. Long list. So Commissioners, the requested action is to approve consented items 1 through 19 and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson?
Second.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hoffman. Cliff Burney, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Commissioners. The motion passes. Nothing on the regular agenda this evening, so we are on to reports in legislation. Mayor Gerisma.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this evening, we want to give a brief presentation on the 2024 proposed utility rates. So as many of you know, we're entering into budget season and we'll be presenting a budget to the commission by December 1st of this year. And then we'll have a work session in December and an adoption of the budget in January. We also, at the same time, as you know, have utility system of water and sewer that we provide regionally. And we need to each year review the rates of those utilities to make sure that we're assessing a rate equal to what we need for revenue to cover, for bond coverage and for our expenses. So this evening, our Public Services Director, James Baker, is going to be giving a brief presentation and there'll be opportunity for questions and discussion. And then we'll have next steps from here.
Director Baker? Welcome, Director Baker. Nice to have you here.
Good evening, Your Honor. I'm Mr. Mayor. For the introduction and good evening, City Commission. We've got a presentation for you tonight for the 2024 proposed utility rates. Just a brief overview of the agenda. We're going to talk about, you know, the overview of the utilities. Some of you may not be aware of, you know, what the utilities serve, where those service areas are located and who our customer groups are. We're going to talk a little bit about some projects, not all the projects, but some of the projects in 2024. We also have some new programs coming out in 2024. We'd like to highlight and talk about those. And then we'll talk about the proposed utility impacts for different customer groups and classifications. So just a brief overview of the drinking water system. We've got a map here in front of you showing you what the service area is of the system. It's a pretty large system, expands most of the metro area except for the city of Portage. However, we do provide service at the city of Portage for customers north of I-94. This is a system that is a regional system represented by 11 different municipalities in addition to the city of Kalamazoo. In terms of size, it's the fifth largest utility in the state of Michigan. And to give some perspective, city of Kalamazoo is the 16th largest city in Michigan and as a utility with the fifth largest utility. Similar service area in wastewater. We provide, there's one wastewater treatment plant in Kalamazoo County. That's our wastewater treatment plant located in Kalamazoo. So we provide both retail sewer service to many of our customer groups, many of the same customer groups in water. And we also provide treatment for groups or municipalities that have their own sewer systems, such as city of Portage and many of our other cities throughout the metropolitan area. We've got, you know, the one large central plant located here in city of Kalamazoo. That's continuous, that flow that comes into the plant, on average, about 27 million gallons per day. That's well over a million gallons per hour that's coming into the plant, 24/7/365. That plant went into operation in 1955. Prior to 1955, that wastewater went directly to the Kalamazoo River. So this is one of those things that we need to encourage continued investment and really recognize our place in terms of both safe community and environmental responsibility when it comes to wastewater treatment. Looking at 2024 capital projects, just looking at kind of our project areas. We'll go into a little bit of detail with this. You know, we're looking at system reliability, you know, water quality, you know, overall improvements in treatment, odor upgrades, odor controlled treatment, tertiary treatment upgrades and some upgrades to interceptors. I'm talking specifically about lead service line replacements. This is something that city of Kalamazoo really took some initiative back in 2017 and the city commission at that time committed to an annual replacement schedule that would get 20 years to replace all lead service lines. So we estimated about 10,000 lead services that were in place in the ground in 2017. We've replaced over 4,200 to date. We've got a pretty big project of over 1,080 lead service line replacements that the city commission already awarded this year. So that work is occurring now and is going to continue into 2024. We also have a next project area, which is Edison. We'll have about 1,600 proposed replacements in 2024. So a major milestone that we're going to pass in 2024 is we're going to hit our 5,000th lead service line replacement in 2024. That for us marks 50% completion with our goal to have all lead service lines completed by 2037. So that's great news. We are ahead of schedule. We, I plan to continue that. Just some program highlights. When we talk about lead, this is always an opportunity to recognize and highlight that there's no safe level of lead. Our work is not done here. We offer free lead testing and free filters. Give us a call, 3311 or 337-8000, anywhere in our system. And we'll provide you with a free filter. We can identify if your home has a lead service line and we can test your home to see if you have results that are above the action level. If we test your home and your home is above action level, we will immediately schedule your home for lead service line replacement, irregardless of where we are with our project schedule. So that's another great program that we offer. Our current 90th percentile results are at seven. The action level from Michigan currently is 15. In 2025, that number's going to drop to 12. Water main replacement, this is something that we've been doing for a number of years now with great success. When we do large street projects, we also want to look what's underneath the pavement to deliver a project that's in tune with the asset management plan approach to total lifecycle analysis. We don't want to pave a street new and then come back the next winter and dig it up for a water main break. And we also want to optimize our dig in terms of being able to balance costs across both streets and water to provide a project that overall reduce costs to ratepayers. So we've got a few examples here, some positive projects. We've got some projects that are going to happen next year as well, which include White's in Ransom as well as Weston. It's just going to continue next year. This map shows, this map may be a little hard to read, but you've got some, a bunch of squiggly lines. Those lines represent water main. That's essentially a zoomed in map of where the water main is at. A blue line means that that's a new water main with no break history. A green line is old water main with no break history. And then yellow, orange and red are varying degrees of break history. So if you look at where you see a majority of the yellow, orange and red lines are kind of in the southern and southwest areas of the city. And there is a pocket up in Kalamazoo Township in East Wood. So those are areas where when we look at planning and we look years ahead of time with our streets capital improvement plan, we're looking at this map as well to kind of coordinate street projects with water main replacement projects. One of our big projects that we just completed is a large diameter looping project. This was out in the townships. This connects two pressure districts, which will really increase reliability and performance. Where we're able to balance tankage and supply across two different pressure districts, the east side high and high pressure district in terms of townships. That's connecting Richland, Richland Village, Comstock Townships with Kalamazoo Townships, city of Kalamazoo and Oshmo, where we had some areas that had some limited redundancy. So this really improves redundancy, fire flow and our ability to support new growth in some commercial areas in and around Kalamazoo. Some of the treatment station improvements that we're going to be working on. Our administrative consent order with Eagle that was issued in 2021 required optimized corrosion control. That optimized corrosion control is something that's necessary for both water quality improvements, for lead and for reduction of iron and overall aesthetic water quality improvements. We've worked through a lot of testing. We've worked through analysis at the stations themselves to actually design the optimal corrosion blend and the optimal water quality parameters. This project will be implemented within the next 400 days after it receives Eagle permitting. So this is likely to be implemented throughout all of 2024 and into 2025. We've had a lot of discussion on odor control. You know, we've continued that discussion with a lot of great work. In fact, when I came up here, we were doing work that the commission approved a few meetings ago where the carbon scrubber systems were getting the carbon media replacement. So it's an annual maintenance program. It's about $500,000. That work is happening right now. But looking out into the future, we've got a lot of work that's going to continue to happen under the lens of improved odor control. And that's something that we're going to continue to work on. It almost could be a whole meeting just on this topic to continue to talk about all that great work we're doing, as well as that transparency and accountability. We've got real-time links that folks can go to to see what the results are today and what all the history is of all the odor data, all the way back to September 2019. Tertiary treatment is a large project in the wastewater treatment plant. We've to date spent about $22.3 million. This is the final step, the last step in wastewater treatment. This is kind of a filtering process that filters everything before it goes into the Kalamazoo River. We're looking at an operational start date of May of 2024. So that should align nicely with Public Services Week and we'd be happy to have everybody out at the wastewater treatment plant come May of 2024 to see this new process and see some major improvements to water quality as it gets discharged Kalamazoo River. So we're going to talk now about some trends in history in investment in the water and wastewater utilities. We've got kind of a stacked bar chart here in front of you. The blue represents investment in millions for water and the orange represents investment in millions for wastewater. There's a straight or linear line that's drawn horizontally across that chart. That line is drawn at $26 million and represents our bond financing goal of funding for water. So I'll talk a little bit about that. I'm going to advance some slides and kind of use that to go kind of back to what I'm talking about. So here's a breakdown of capital investment in water over the next five-year period as proposed. You'll see that we've got funding broken out in a few different line items horizontally, such as, you know, water source and pumping, water infrastructure and CIA, lead service line replacement, PFAS and DWSRF, general plant facilities, cash operating capital and then a total. If you go below that, it breaks out the financing plan for that work. You'll see that revenue bond requirements, and there's an asterisk that tells you in details, you know, what that is that we're talking about. We're planning to fund 75 to 80% of non-cash, non-DWSRF projects. So that's how we get to that $26 million line. We've got a lot of projects listed out here. In 2025, we've got over $100 million of work that's out ahead of us. So how do we tie that back to the $26 million? What we're seeing with this budget plan is that we're going to fund through rates about $26 million of that. And that remaining amount, we're going to go after state resources, state and federal resources. An example for right now for 2024, we're going to fund through rates about $24 million of improvements. We've got seven point, nearly $7.7 million in grant from the state. So grants, great news. That means that's money that comes into the utility that ratepayers don't pay for. And then $7.7 million of low interest funding that has a different rate impact from open market bonds. So that first year, we know what those results are so we can fill those in. We don't know where we We don't know where we stand on those out-year projects. We still have to submit and go through the formal scoring and vetting process of, of that work. So that just brings you back to how we got to that line and, and similar for wastewater as well. You know, just kind of want to make the point that in our, in our water and wastewater utilities, these are enterprise funds. These are business enterprises within their own right within the city. They're not part of general fund. All the dollars that come into these funds for water and wastewater must support the waste, water and wastewater utility and they can't be used elsewhere in general funds. We can't take water and wastewater dollars and buy a fire truck with it. That, we can't use those funds for that purpose. This is essentially an independent business unit. So all the funding has to be generated through rates. Some principles of some of those long-term water agreements, we just signed a long-term water agreement with our, our partners, eleven municipal jurisdictions in the townships and other areas. That's a forty-year long-term agreement, brings stability to our region, really focuses on some common canons of e- equalized rates and stability across the region. You know, we're also in, in the process of negotiation, a long-term wastewater agreement with some of these same concepts as well. Through that work, we also recognize that the cost for new service line installations had varying fees associated with it as you move throughout the different jurisdictions. City of Kalamazoo, at the time, did not charge anything besides the construction cost to connect. Some townships charged an additional fee like a connection fee, if you will, on top of the construction cost. So as we work together through the utilities policy committee, the utility policy committee created a, a work group that went out and analyzed, you know, what these costs would look like. And then with a proposal that came back with a recommendation to the utility policy committee and some contract amendments that will be coming forward to the city commission as well. So what this system does is it takes everybody across the whole system and will charge a system capacity buy-in fee to all new customers coming in. So this would be, this would include new houses that get built, new commercial developments, anything new that's getting constructed with a meter is going to pay a system capacity buy-in fee. There's a chart that's included, it's, it's right there on the screen. It shows you the costs of about one, one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a new connection. Now this all goes to the utility and this will help to offset the rate burden on existing customers. So essentially the premise here is that growth pays for growth and new customers will pay a system capacity buy-in fee to recognize the, the work and investment that previous customers are already paying in the system. Another big program for twenty twenty-four that we've been working on is the water affordability program. This is something that we were awarded a grant and the, the utility policy committee has done a lot of great work with this and the program's getting ready to launch in, in twenty twenty-four. This is a QR code, it'll take you right to the actual programs, a written document. It's a thick document. It's a little long-winded, but it shows, goes through and shows all the different things that we can do to help with water affordability. There's also been a lot of work that, that staff has been engaged on, on simplifying some aspects of the water bill. So that's yet to come. So you're going to see that come January, when the bills start to come out, you're going to have a new feature in your bill that's going to show you your usage. And there's going to be some other features that we're going to talk about here with direct regards to water affordability for customers. So one of the things that we developed a relationship with Community Action Agency of South Central Michigan through the development of the water affordability program. That relationship really kind of established a administrative relationship where as the Community Action Agency would stand to process and create kind of the, the claims process for us to administer the, our water affordability program. As we worked through those details, Grant Opportunity came out from the state of Michigan and we applied for statewide water affordability funding through the Community Action Agency of South Central Michigan. We were successful in that grant award, so we are funded through all of twenty twenty-four for payment arrears assistance for all customers that are income eligible and that is two hundred percent or below federal poverty. So this is a, a great news for City of Kalamazoo, great news for all City of Kalamazoo customer communities. We're going to be rolling this out via postcard and information that's also going to be on your bill. So every single water bill, every customer is going to have a box in it that says, "For utility payment assistance, payment arrears program, please contact CAA with the number on it." We're also going to start having some workshops in the community. So we're going to be hosting open out, office hours at Stockbridge and some other community location in City of Kalamazoo, City of Portage, Oshmo and other places all throughout our system to encourage folks to come in, sit down, talk to us and figure out ways that they can take, take advantage of this program. So just kind of bringing this all full circle, utility payment assistance program will be up and active, effective immediately. Call that number and get started right away. Everybody's covered. If you're part of our system, you're included in this. We, we still have payment plans and extensions and, and smart meters are also an opportunity to help, you know, connect customers with some improved telematics and improved resources. One thing that we do want to mention is that delinquent account shut-offs will resume in twenty twenty-four. That's something that as a utility, we've got to continue to do that work. That work can be uncomfortable and traumatic at times, but it's something that we have to do. Through our study, we recognize that as a, as a system, our customers' willingness to pay and our customers' ability to pay are not aligned. So if we were to show you like an overlay, a map of like dots of where we have folks not paying water bills, those dots cross census tracts where we shouldn't see challenges. And I'm not saying there's not challenges, but I think for us, you know, to move forward as a utility to make sure we're getting accurate data on true water affordability, we do need to separate the ability to pay from the willingness to pay. So talking about rates moving forward, you know, some of the things that go into the costs that we pay are a lot of our raw material and chemical input costs, utilities and some of these other things that, that we do. So instead of CPI or Consumers Price Impact, Consumers Price Index, we compare more directly to Producers Price Index. So this is just a, a trend here that shows you where costs have been trending for producers, folks that are in chemicals and allied products that, you know, manufacture things and, and do this kind of work. One of the things that's been really increasing in terms of cost has been sludge disposal cost. We've seen sludge disposal cost go from around four and a half million dollars in two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen to nineteen, all the way up to over thirteen million dollars in twenty twenty-four. So that's, that's, that's a huge jump. This trend line shows you that journey that we've been on the last few years. These are, these are big numbers and, and to go from that jump from four and a half million dollars to thirteen million dollars is a big jump. When you look at the chemicals that we're using in the wastewater plant and, and these are, these are things we have to do. I, I, I'm not saying that, and, and taking that lightly, this, we have to do this work. But chemical and sludge disposal costs alone in the wastewater treatment plant are over eighteen million dollars a year. I'm going to pause there for a second. Eighteen million dollars a year is a lot of dollars to bring in as a wastewater utility. So, you know, looking at that, there's something that we touched on just, you know, real briefly. We've got a, a work group, a good governance work group that's looking at residual biosalts, sustainable alternatives. We issued a RFI this year in April. We've come together in scoring sessions to look at different technologies and we're trying, and we're moving the needle towards some future recommendations, future engagements with some additional stakeholder groups to really look at what alternative approaches can we do for biosalts disposal here in Kalamazoo. So there are technologies out there. This is an opportunity for us to invest in the future and you'll see that in your capital improvement plans as you receive your budget. You'll see some pretty large dollar figures in capital and wastewater over the next five-year period as we look to bring in a sustainable approach to biosalts disposal. In terms of rates, we're just moving the dollars from OpEx to CapEx to create a solution to this problem. So in terms of, you know, final impacts to customers, water rate increases, we're looking at a typical monthly increase for water of about two dollars and thirty-four cents a month, and that would be the same for both in-city and out-city. This usage in, in meters would be equivalent to a, a family using about a hundred and fifty gallons of water a day. So it's a pretty big number. We find a lot of our families don't even use that much water, but if you were using on the upper end of the water, you'd expect an increase of about two dollars and thirty-four cents a month. In wastewater, depending on whether you're a city or township customer, you know, two to three dollars per month. Total impact for combined water and sewer bill together for a city customer, you're looking at about four dollars and ninety-three cents, so less than five dollars a month increase. In township customers, about five dollars and ninety-three cents for everything altogether. So, I mean, overall rate increases that, that fund, you know, a tremendous package of really some enhanced services here for twenty twenty-four. Overall, six percent increase in water and about a twelve percent increase in, in wastewater. And future increases based on the information that we have today would be in the seven to nine percent for water and the twelve to fifteen percent for wastewater. There are some uncertainties in, in utility funds, you know, certainly when we're talking about eighteen million dollars a year for chemicals and wastewater disposal, those costs can swing even a little bit in terms of percentage can be a big amount in terms of, of cost. We also have some, you know, pretty large capital projects where, you know, we're seeing the, the price of water main continues to go up. If we got back in the time machine and went back to a time period not too far ago, two thousand eighteen era, we were paying two hundred foot or less, two hundred dollars per foot or less for new water main installed. Today, that price for new water main installation is over five hundred dollars a foot. So that's some perspective as we look at not too long ago, a project in twenty nineteen that might cost a million dollars to do a mile of water main, today might cost, you know, much more than that, you know, upwards of two and, two and a half to three million There has been, you know, certainly some great news, some great work by staff. Our, our staff engineers in, in the, in the water division and in the wastewater division have done a wonderful job of, you know, working towards getting competitive grants and bringing those into Kalamazoo. In total, we've got between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, over twenty-three million dollars in, in, in grant. These are grant dollars, so this is not included in the rates, but this is investment that is happening or it has happened that's coming into the city mainly through the bipartisan infrastructure law, the BIL, and the state uses DWSRF and SRF as a clearinghouse for those funds. So we've been really competitive with that work and that's something we're going to continue to do. So you see kind of all those future space investments that we haven't filled in the number yet. This is where we're, we're going to be applying for that. Next steps, we plan to bring forward ordinance revisions for rates on December fourth, that'd be first reading, and then action requests will be Monday, December eighteenth. The goal here is to have new water and wastewater rates in place January first. Without turning back over to City Manager, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Director Baker. Questions from commission for Director Baker this time? Yes, Commissioner Hoffman.
Thank you, thank you for this. I, I just want to say this in full transparency, I'm going to have an issue voting yes to increase water rates when it was, it's been such a hardship for so many households. So I just want to put that out there, but I do thank you for this information. I want to go back to the slide where you talked about new homeowners, new construction for homeowners and that, that fund, there will be something that will be added to, can you, can you go a little more in depth with that? So new home, new construction, and I'm thinking of all the work KNHS, Kalamazoo Neighborhood Housing Services is doing around providing affordable homeownership opportunities for families that are low to moderately income households. So I just need a little more clarity around this when you talk about that. Thank you.
Yeah, so this, this is a program that, you know, essentially looks at new customers from a system capacity buy-in perspective. So you've got the system as it sits today that's, that's built out and you've got new customers coming in. In terms of new customers coming in, as a utility, you have on average about four to five hundred new customer accounts that come in per year. Majority of that is in the townships, in Oshmo and Texas Township to kind of to the south and west. In perspective, there's very few new connections happening in City of Kalamazoo. And even if you look at KNHS, new home builds, I don't have the exact number. I believe it's less than twelve in twenty twenty-four. It's, that number is very small in comparison to what this will bring in. Another thing to look at too, when you look at an eight-inch meter that brings in thirty-seven thousand dollars, this would be like a developer that's developing any sort of, you know, new use, mixed use or, you know, shopping mall or, or, or what commercial development. And so when you look at, say, just a typical residential customer that pays their water bill, that water bill that we all pay is also paying for this development. And so if we take these development costs and make them pay upfront for that, that helps to balance it out. So, you know, it really is a, a, a growth pace for growth concept. And it's, it's not meant to, to pick on anybody or, or to, you know, punish low-income housing. There's, you know, a lot of great work with low-income housing that happens. One of the things that this city commission did approve, did approve in the early part of this year was a five hundred thousand dollar commitment to upsizing. So that supported a low-income housing development in Pavilion Township that the water utility paid five hundred thousand dollars towards to help upsize some, some water mains. So there's a lot of great work that this utility and the city commission's doing for housing, but also recognizing that everybody has to pay for these costs. And, and just like consumers, energy is going to require those homes to pay for gas meters and for electric meters, there's also a cost for the water utility as well.
Okay. I'm going to let it marinate. Okay. My second question is in reference, you said that January twenty twenty-four, that bills will resume. So can you speak to how much we have available for arrears and, and just assistance for households who have, you know, some households haven't paid a water bill in a couple of years? And so I'm just wondering, is there a cap on what a household could, could receive? And then how large is that budget in totality?
So I, I don't have the disclosure on how large the funding is. There is no, there's no cap per household and there's no limitation per household. So if a household qualifies, they're covered. There are ways to, if you are a household that has an existing arrears, we're not going to come shut you off on January first. One of the first things that we're going to do is reach out to you and make sure that you're either in our payment, our, our, our payment program or you're in our payment arrears assistance program. So either in, in, income can be the qualifier for which program you go into there. Following that, moving forward, you know, we, we, you would have to stay current as, as we move forward. And we've updated a lot of the messaging and information that comes out to your home and service address. So you're, you're going to get the bill, you're going to get a, a late notice, a past due notice, a shut-off notice, and then a shut-off so that you'll have plenty of notice and information as we're stepping up to this. This is also going to be something that's new for a lot of our staff. Every one of our commercial office folks that handle billing have never done shut-offs. So this is something new. And so when you go to the water department in terms of field services and distribution, the supervisors have handled shut-offs, so there's a number of folks that haven't handled shut-offs before. So this is something that we're going to have to step into slowly, but it is. So this is something that we're going to have to step into slowly, but it is needed for, you know, the utility to get back up, up to speed with the programs that we have and to ensure that we've got a, you know, accurate understanding of, you know, ability to pay and willingness to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Baker, for the presentation. So I was just kind of looking at the report that came out. It was the 2021 utility report, a report on 2022 water rates done in December 2021. And are you, do you remember how much rates went up in 2017?
I could, I could get that information, but I don't have that information in front of you, but, you know, we do, we do have that information.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is I'm kind of looking at, you know, some of the numbers that were here. What was the amount that it increased in 2022? Do we know?
So in, are you talking about in 2022?
For the water rates, yeah.
We did a 20% increase for 2023, and that was, that was done effective January 1st, but the, but the work and decision was earlier, it was in October. So in October of 2022, the city commission approved an effective January 1st 20% increase.
20% increase, and that was for 2022 and 2023 because we had any?
That was just for 23.
For 2023?
That was just for 23.
Okay. 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23. So in six years, if we're just talking about water, I believe it's increased almost 28% since 2017. All water rates across the board, I'm just kind of looking at some of the information here. That's what's in there. And I guess I am also concerned, as Commissioner Hoffman is, this is a lot to ask for our residents right now that are already struggling to pay their water bills as it is. And, you know, I see we have on here a 6% increase in water rates, which is, yes, less than what this report said we would have had in 2024, 7.5. But I don't, yeah, I have, I don't know. I know we're always seeking grants, and I appreciate that because I love grants and the city loves grants. I'm just wondering, when we think about the capital improvements that we have planned for the subsequent years, say up to 2026, what this report goes to, would there be any way to slim down on that?
Yes, you know, so there's, if I can try to kind of walk through that, there's a lot of, you made a lot of statements, if I may, can kind of talk through some of those and provide some response. The 6% water increase that we're recommending has a monthly cost of about $2.34. So in terms of real dollars, that's, that's what we're talking about, about $2.34 a month. When you look at just the water bill portion, your current water bill for a family using 150 gallons a day, which is, that's a lot of water, you're looking at about $38 a month for, for water, which is, in comparison, that, that's a, that's a pretty low cost for water, for clean, safe, safe drinking water, and to recognize everything that is provided, you know, with this utility. I want to pause from that, it's just, you know, a broad statement providing some perspective of, of, of cost and, and what do we get out of that? But we can, we can come back to that, but let me jump over to what's in front of us here on the screen. It's kind of those blue bar chart represent investment. I spoke earlier about as a utility, the utility has to pay for this investment. We don't receive supplemental funding from general fund. This utility is bigger than just the city Kalamazoo, we showed a map earlier. City Kalamazoo is the 16th largest city in Michigan. This water utility is the fifth largest water utility in Michigan. It is the largest all groundwater utility in the state of Michigan. As a large utility, we have a lot of responsibility. One of those responsibilities that we talked about is lead service line replacement. We fund lead service line replacement. Another major responsibility that we have is PFAS. We have investment needs at our station number five for PFAS treatment, because we have a PFAS plume that is within 1,000 feet of that station. So that budget includes over $40 million for investment in PFAS treatment. The overall capital plan also includes components required under the ACL administrative consent order, as well as a number of other items that have been in plan and strategy and in design for more than five years in terms of, you know, when we, we implement projects. In the water utility, we don't implement projects in a stopgap, you know, few month period where we, we sit idly, we wait for budgets are approved, and then we start up some design. Our designs are fluid and they, they span between design and project implementation. They span sometimes upwards of 36 months or more for individual projects. So in terms of, if this commission, you know, were to take a firm stance on, you know, no rate increases, period, we would, we'd have to kind of slow that down, and it might take some years to unwind that, that investment. I would also say that if you look historically, if you go back to like 2015, 2016, you see very little investment. That's where we were as a utility. As a utility, our number one goal used to be to have the lowest rates in the state, and as we focused and hyper-focused on that number one goal, we lost sight of water quality. We lost sight of lead service line replacement. We lost sight of some, many other project needs, including cast iron main replacement. I spoke earlier about cast iron main replacement costing $200 a foot back in 2019. We're over 500 foot, we're over $500 a foot today. If we stop that investment, it's not going to get cheaper in the future. I'll pause there.
Thank you for that. You know, you kind of said something earlier, you know, I believe we're all aligned that we need new housing, and with new housing, new construction comes with needing to make sure we have the water infrastructure for the city and to make sure that we can deliver. My concern is that residents are struggling right now with, to pay the water rates that they have. And for us to, I won't speak for my team, but I think we're kind of, I think some of the residents, and I guess I'm definitely waiting to see what the program will be in 2024, because I'm pretty sure that you're going to have to hit a certain income level before you can be helped, or no?
200, 200% of federal poverty.
So that is correct, then what is on the Community Action website is, that is the correct 200%?
200% correct.
That's already down there?
Yep.
Okay. And then I think about families and individuals who don't read that requirement, you know? There's some individuals that are also struggling, that have good paying jobs, that may not be able to pay their water bill. So I'm hoping that, you know, we can take a look at that also. I know you've got a great program that we've got started for low-income residents. But I think as we had our pastor, as he did it there at invocation today, you know, we need to think of all of the city residents, right? Still, as I say that, I mean, I'm, and again, I agree with Commissioner Hoffman, this is a big increase, and it, we might have to slow some stuff down. You already said we're ahead of schedule. If we need to change that timeline, just to be able to make sure that we're not putting our residents in more harm's way, and again, possibly not being able to pay the bill and not being able to pay the bill, that can lead to, you know, other things falling down the wayside and becoming houses or whatnot. So hopefully we can kind of take a look at that and, you know, see what it would be and when you would possibly finish if we did slow down what we're doing so we're not having to increase these rates so much.
If I may just offer a response, with, with water, speaking of water specifically, we don't anticipate there's a, a lot of room, even if we were to stop projects completely. And further to that point, let me go back to the project financing page. We've got, and I don't know if there's, there's a pointer, but there's, there's two boxes on the, the lower left-hand column that both show about $7.7 million. So that's a $15 million lead service line replacement project that's scheduled to start in the Edison neighborhood that right now has $7.7 million of funding and grant from the state. Our match would be $7.7 million. That match would be spread out over, it's on the screen, Commissioner? Okay, I'm sorry. It's, it's page 18 in your PDF. So we've got on the left there, shows you $7.7 million on the bottom, and they're kind of stacked, two stacked projects. So if we were as a community to halt or slow down projects, that, that project would get eliminated, and with that goes our $7 million in, in grant. So a lot of this is heavily leveraged in, you know, bringing in a lot of dollars. The last slide, I won't jump slides around on you, but the last slide shows that, you know, we brought in over $23 million in, you know, in 2023 and 2024 in, in grant dollars. So that's, that's a lot of great work coming in, but, you know, certainly we recognize the concern. One of the things that, you know, we didn't really talk about in this presentation is debt coverage and meeting bond covenants. So we've got bonds that we're paying on right now for work that we've already done. So we've already done that work, but we've got to continue to pay those bonds. With those current bond coverage ratios, there's, there's not a lot of wiggle room in, in water. So even if we were to go back and jeopardize a lot of these projects, jeopardize these, you know, $7 million in grants, we might be able to come back with like a 5% rate increase or a 4% rate increase. And if you break that down at dollars, $2.34 a month, in my opinion, is not worth risking $7 million in funding for the state and federal resources to help us out.
Thank you for that. I didn't want to say I want to stop projects, that I want to slow them down. So as we think of things going forward, again, I just, I think I'm going to have to sit on this one too for a little bit. But thank you for bringing this to us, and I'm pretty sure this will all be covered at our budget meetings as we start to talk about that. Thank you, Director Baker.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the great questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Prado.
Hey, Director Baker. Thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate you starting this conversation early. I know it's a busy night, but there were a few questions I did want to ask you that I think would be helpful to this conversation. I also want to say that you have, you personally have really made me passionate about this work in infrastructure, and I love talking about it, I love learning about it, and you've educated me so much. I really want to make sure that the public understands what's at stake, you know? There's two alternatives, right? We can pay some more, or what happens, right? And I think it's on us as, as a city to help people understand what option or route you want to go down. Because one option is slight incremental pay now, the other option is catastrophic pain, you know, maybe a decade, two decades from now, which means the people who are going to suffer the most by inaction today are by us not making action now. So I guess my question was, I know last time we were in this place that you did some communication pieces, postcards, whatnot, but I wonder if you've given any thought or if your team's considered how we can, you know, I, I know when I say communicate, I'm not saying trying to convince people of something. I mean, like, educate people at what's at stake, help them make that choice so they, they feel empowered to, to help us make that decision. Are there ways that we can communicate and help explain why this is important?
Yeah, most certainly. You know, one of the things from a communication perspective, one of our goals has been to get this information out there, that we've got a payment arrears program, that there is assistance available for nearly everybody, whether you are income-qualified, that you can take part of that grant through Community Action Agency, or you're not and you might need some help from, from a payment plan. So those postcards are, I don't think they've been mailed, but they're, it's very close.
Sure.
I, I think the next biggest takeaway that, that we would like to try to make as a utility is that the connection between the water that's delivered to your tap, that when you flush your toilet, it goes away, when you wake up in the middle of the night and you turn your faucet on and it comes out, and it's clean, safe drinking water. We're below the limit for lead, we're below the limit for PFAS, we haven't had any health violations in more than five years, and there's, you know, many examples I can continue to support to prove that we're a, a, a well-managed water utility, and again, one of the largest water utilities in, in the state. And so there's, there's a lot of work that goes into that, and there's a direct relationship to our customers. We're a customer-owned system. There's no profit margin, there's no outside corporation. This system is owned by the rate payers, and you pay a rate based on your usage. So everybody's an owner in this, and there's no other group besides us getting dollars in, in matched dollars and everything, cooperative dollars through, through the state of Michigan, which is a huge success. So I think, you know, continuing to, you know, one, thank our customer base for being so supportive of, of doing this work. You know, we've got a, a great community, you know, a great group of, of customers in 11 municipal jurisdictions that are all paying as we go to provide clean, safe drinking water. So, you know, that's certainly a message that we'll, we'll be looking to get out there as well.
So, you know, for me, you know, I think about when you're talking to people who are out, who are residents in the community, if I'm going to pay more and I see my rates going up, I want to know that you're making good use, you know, that we're not just being extravagant and that Director Baker has got the flash yes, you know, rim is on his new truck and, you know, the moon and tomb package on your truck and everything, you know, kind of thing. They want to make sure that you're like really using those dollars and getting it used to it. And, and yeah, I'll give you a couple of examples of ways that I've heard you talk about this, but I wonder if you could talk a little about maybe these examples or some more. You guys purchase water main pipes in bulk proactively, right? So you recognize the escalating increase in rate costs for those and material costs, and how long it was taking to order it, which was backlogging and making projects cost more because you have effectively all these people, you know, sitting idle because they're waiting for the material to put in the ground. So you did that in bulk. Fuel strategies, cost savings and fuel strategies, the solid waste centrifuge trying to get water out of it so we're not just shipping water in trucks. You know, those and other ways, what are some ways that your, your team is working diligently to make sure that the money that we are, are asking people to pay more to do is going to the best use?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you've, you've brought a lot of great examples, and those are all great real-world examples of our attempts to optimize resources to ensure that we're delivering, you know, the best project strategies at the lowest overall cost. You know, when you talk about water main, one of the things that we've been doing, we talked about, we have a slide about coordinating water main replacement with street projects. So Weston Age White's Road, these are our big federally funded street projects that we're also working, funding together with, with water to replace those, those water mains. So we look at White's Road, that section of White's Road that is, you know, kind of currently under construction, will be under construction in 2024. That water mains from 1948, that's over 75 years old and has got a significant break history. You can go down the map and just see break after break after break. There's some sections of that water main that are over 10 foot deep. If you could imagine the public perception, including the city commission's perception, if we were to make a cost-cutting move and forego the water main replacement on White's Road, but move forward the paving, then the next winter, we dig a giant, and for to dig 10 feet down, I got to dig 20 feet across, hole in the middle of it. So we have really what we're doing now, we're working hard today to provide a more reliable, safer water system for the future. And we can go through many, many examples and, and highlights of that, including an example about the pre-purchase of, of water main back in 2022, so about this time last year. You know, we had learned information from our suppliers that the procurement of water main was more than a year out, and so that we would have to go all the way through the design award and then sit on a project for a year. So we worked with our engineers and we bought the pipe, we bought over $6.5 million a pipe and got that out of order, the city commission approved that, I believe, last, last October through November period. That allowed us to stay on schedule with the projects that we're delivering this year and into next year. In terms of sustainable bio-salts alternative, there's a lot of work going into that. We don't like spending $13 million a year right now to take sludge and throw it away in the landfill. We believe there are better solutions for that. So we're going to be working So we're going to be working towards some of the solutions while understanding and recognizing our community sustainability plan. We put together a good governance team to help create what that future strategy will look like, and included a seat at the table, our members from our community planning, economic development department, and specifically folks that deal with our sustainability plan, emissions, things like that. We want to make sure we're looking at that at the future as well.
Last question for you as well is, I kind of, when I was like going around neighborhoods and talking to people, I kind of described it as it's like golden window of opportunity that we're in right now, that we may never see again in our lifetime, where, you know, you're in the aftermath of a pandemic, where you have an inordinate amount of money coming in from the federal government and from the state, where you have opportunities to either get grants, or you have opportunities to get very low interest, you know, financing to do this work. And that window isn't going to last for eternity. And the reality is, is like, if interest rates even stabilize, we'll be lucky, but you know, they might still creep up, you know? And so I guess, just wondering if you could talk about that, you know, this special time that we're in and why it's kind of an important time to like, if you're going to double down, now's the time to do it. Because you look at those five-year capital investment, and you look at the water financing numbers, those numbers there at the state and the federal level for grants and for financing are not going to be there forever.
Yeah, correct. And again, the last slide here, you know, shows what the dollars that we brought in in terms of grant, and I'll just forward us up to that and be able to talk through that. That's 23 million dollars in grant funding that was brought in. Certainly there were match requirements for all these dollars, and that sign right behind you kind of explains it all, why this is possible right now. In terms of overall utility investment in treatment, in system, in capacity, reliability, in water main replacement, Kalamazoo hasn't seen this level of reinvestment since the 1930s, since the Works Progress Act of the 1930s. And Kalamazoo was a large participant in that. And when we go through some of our main records, we see WPA, 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 WPA funded that work. And there was a lot of folks here at the city commission back in the 1930s, when City Kalamazoo hit its low during the Great Depression in 1934, that pushed that work to continue, to push that work to happen so that we could invest and fund this utility into the future. This is certainly a golden opportunity, a golden window, and we want to make sure that we're a part of that, and we're doing everything we can to invest for the future to ensure reliability and safety for future generations.
And I'd just say this really quick, I mean, and I know we all think about these things really heavily, it's a lot in our mind, we hear from people directly who are struggling to afford things as it is, so hearing things go up is a little bit scary of a thought. But the reality is, is if we slash what's being proposed here, the reality is, is it will not change the fact that there are heavier testing requirements and compliance when it comes to things like lead and forever chemicals in our water. It will not change the fact that inflation has made material costs and labor incredibly high, that we're seeing unprecedented material and fuel costs. So slashing it will mean effectively that we're doing everything that we're required to do, and that we will not see the progress that needs to happen for our community and growth and stabilization of our infrastructure. And I think that's something very important to think about, because that is a serious reality, and we have this one golden window opportunity that we can never go back to. This is probably it in our lifetime. You heard, I mean, like you said, 1930s was the last time that we saw this level of injection and investment from the federal and state government. And, and believe me, I mean, you hear from people, in my day job, I talk to people who are under that 200% level and are struggling just to make ends meet as it is. But I also know that a lot of those people are buying their water, you know, because they have, you know, preferences in that regard, they're buying filters in their homes in many cases. And the reality is, is like, when our infrastructure fails, the people who are going to be more disproportionately impacted than any other group of people are low-income individuals because they won't have anywhere else to turn to when they need help with their, the things they depend on. So, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my colleagues have made really good points, great points. I do believe, Commissioner Baker, Mr. Baker, whatever we call you, Director Baker, that you are trying to do what you said, the best possible strategies at the least possible cost. And water and wastewater aren't options. These are things that people need. So the one thing that strikes me is, we're going to have this fund. Is that fund coming out of the wastewater budget? Can we put general funds into that budget if we wanted to?
For water affordability?
Yeah.
So right now, water affordability fund is funded through the grant through Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We have not established a fund that takes rate dollars and puts into that. So we're using grant dollars through 2024. That is something that we're going to continue to look at, is other alternate sources of funding for water affordability. One of the things, if you go and read the report, talks about rates, you know, if we took 1% of rates and put it in for water affordability, you know, could that be an option? There are certain legal perspectives on how that's done, probably too complicated for me to attempt to explain here at the microphone, but there's also two different legislative packages, legislative packages that have been kicked around, that have been introduced on the east side of the state, that are trying to get water affordability programs enacted from a state law perspective to enable utilities such as us to set and establish within our rate structure, a water affordability program. So there's more work to be done on that, we're just starting to tip our toe, dip our toe into the waters of water affordability, and we're extremely thankful that we've got the state program to help us out and roll things out strong in 2024.
Yeah, I think that's good. I think we have to pursue that because there's two realities here. We need to do this. The other reality is there are so many of our people who are barely making, are not making it, and this is going to be a hardship for them. So we have to find a way to make sure that they are taken care of somehow.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Vice Mayor Hess.
Indeed, and I was going to say that too, Don, is that it's a both-and. All right. I don't think we can communicate enough to our people, but not only communicate, which communicate is listening and speaking, but I believe that we're listening. We need to let the people know that we hear them, we know where they are, we know we're struggling. But we also need to educate and over-communicate about why this needs to be done. Because as I said earlier with my grandkids here, I want to make sure that I'm voting for their future and for their grandkids' future. And this is a hard, this is one of the hardest things that we've done every year that we've been here. But as we see, we've been increasing in our investment, and I believe that we still need to do that. But we cannot over-communicate with the people. We need to continue to listen to them and let them know where it is. I know it's on the website, but we cannot, we have to continue to find ways to let the people know and to educate.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for those comments. I agree, we do need to have this done. It does have to be done. So I have two things. You said we are slated to have these complete by 2037, correct? Is that what you're hoping for?
The progress that we set out on beginning in 2017 for a 20-year replacement schedule would get us completed in 2037. We've since reaffirmed our position on that. If you remember, our retreat last March, we committed to a city manager goal of 800 lead service line replacements per year. That's something that we will meet through year-over-year average, if you look at what our proposed projects are for that. And then, you know, we're also, from the way we implement and administer projects, you know, we do them in larger areas than just the 500 per year. Okay, so here's kind of the slide that talks through that, what that schedule looks like, and then kind of where we go. So, yeah, I think, you know, there's, in the future, there's some ability to perhaps level, you know, where our goals and aspirations are on lead service line replacements. We would really implore the city commission to consider moving through and completing the Edison neighborhood first. You know, so in terms of neighborhoods, we have, east side is complete, Eastwood, Kalamazoo Township is complete, north side will be complete at the end of 2024, and then 2024 and 2025 is when we're scheduled to go into Edison. It would not be our recommendation to pull the reins back while we still have core neighborhoods that are outstanding lead service line replacements. You know, we'd want to get the majority of the program completed, at least have our core neighborhoods completed before we go into some sort of holding pattern on that schedule.
Thank you. And yes, we know from kind of walking, Edison does have some of the oldest lines here within the city. The reason I asked about the 2037 date, and thank you for reminding me of our retreat and march and what we said we were going to do. But if we had to stretch that out, I know the state says that we have to have it done by 2041, that would be an extra four years. I'm just throwing out ideas, suggestions to, you know, again, I agree, we need to have it done. We are going far and beyond to get it done before the state regulated guidelines of 2041. Just kind of throwing that out there for thoughts. And then, I think this might be a question for Attorney Liel. So, and again, I'm throwing this out here because I'm not sure, so I'm asking, so the city commission, we still have unallocated funds within our general funds. I want to estimate maybe about 45, 50,000. Is that something that we would be able to put into the fund that is helping, helping pay water bills?
I understand the question you're asking, whether we could use some unallocated general fund dollars and move it into, to pay for the programs that he's discussing or describing?
Yes, so the city commission gets $100,000 each year already. So I'm warning you, if that is something that we could use that on again, it would be a commission vote for something like that, when we think about still moving forward, but then also making sure we're giving funds to our residents, as little as it may be, but, you know, it's something that we could think about.
That's going to be more of a question directed towards the Management Services Director, Steve Visensi, who knows that those processes inside and out.
Okay. So City Manager Ritzma, if we could, I would love to get that answer from Mr. Visensi and maybe have it with us at our next.
Sure.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Director Baker.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Pedo? Thank you, Commissioner Decker.
Actually, I have a question. This is directed towards you, Jim. So one of the things that I know has kind of been part of conversation is you look at, you know, just the state, our state reps and what they brought back to the district, you know, they brought back funding to support Canac, they brought back funding to help water filtration for saltwater at Asylum Lake, they brought funding for supporting mental health support services with public safety. And you recognize, like, you know, I saw the Capitol outlay lists or whatever from other communities, we got a lot of money for the 131 business. But, you know, I know there are a lot of communities, and it's a dirty word, but, you know, they have lobbyists that are, even if it's outsourced, that are going to our elected officials to say, hey, we have these heavy lifts, we really need help with X, you know? And, you know, I think about some of the good examples, is like our older mediation efforts. That's something that's a serious, you know, issue in our community that we're grappling with, that costs are exorbitant, right? But, you know, maybe there are opportunities to go and say, you know, we really want to achieve this, but it's $11 million and we can't afford it, you know, and really prioritize and say, these are the three things, if we could get funding, we would really want to chase. And I'm just kind of curious if your thoughts about that, because I know that's something that we really haven't used in a long time.
Yeah.
And just looking at what other communities got, I think we have a real opportunity still while there's still some, you know, inflows from ARCA funding and stuff that maybe we could go for some of those. I just wanted to get your thoughts about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So as part of the 2023 budget development, we did include funding for a lobbyist, and we're in the process now of selecting that lobbyist. My goal is to get that person on board, hopefully by the end of the year, but certainly by January, to do just what you're talking about, is lobby for cities' interest in funding and other, you know, advocacy that would help us as a community.
To me, like, you know, a lot of these infrastructure things that we really want the most, they're most expensive, are really like social justice issues is more than anything.
Right.
And I think there are real opportunities to make that case to say, especially if we are very strategic and all in uniformity about like, if we could do it, this would be our project number one, this would be our project number two, this would be our project number three. And to me, that would really help show the public, we're making a really good effort to try to minimize those expenses that, you know, we are kind of unavoidable.
Sure. Yeah. Point well taken. Thank you.
Other questions this time, commissioners? No? Okay. Thank you, Director Baker, appreciate that. You're certainly someone who is very, very involved and very capable when it comes to dealing with these issues, and I really appreciate it. Just one comment I do want to make is that, although this has seemed like a deep dive, and it has to some extent, if you really want to get involved in some deeper dives, there is something called the Utility Policy Committee that spends a lot of time, which we are partners to, and I happen to be one of the city representatives that attends those meetings with Director Baker. So for anyone that's interested, there are other opportunities to really even delve deeper into this work. There's a lot of discussion that happens at that gathering, and then recommendations come to us. We are the entity that gets to decide about these things here, even though it isn't just the City of Kalamazoo. Just a couple of other random thoughts, in no particular order, that for what it's worth, you know, the whole decisions that got made in Flint were about saving money and feeling like the system was too expensive, and we can find another way to do these things. So for whatever that's worth, I mean, that stands alone, that's out there. I don't want to be that commission. There are some things we're talking about here, just something we've got to keep in mind. We've just talked about this, increasing costs to construct, but not just that. We're not just talking about investments for the future, we're not talking about, well, hey, can we sit around and let this 75-year-old line, you know, stick around for another five or 10 years and we'll just keep fixing it when it breaks? We're talking about operating costs increase, I mean, three times what it used to cost hauler sledgeaway. We don't have a choice about that. We can't say, let's put that off a few years. That's something we have to pay for every single year. So it's not only construction costs, which affects our maintenance as well, but our actual, every single day operating costs. In addition to that, we've got additional and more restrictive regulations coming our way. No control on that whatsoever. And some of these things are a surprise to us. I mean, how much were we thinking about PFAS 10 years ago?
No, none at all. It was on our UCMR under a detection limit of parts per billion. It is now parts per trillion. The level used to be a 70 parts per trillion health-based level. That is now going to, Michigan has seven MCLs that are specific for each component. The most stringent are PFOA and PFLS. The city is currently in, or within the regulation of that, we're between, we're in the neighborhood of four for both PFOA and PFLS. However, EPA just passed new MCLs, which take those numbers even lower. So when that becomes law in Michigan, we will have to implement treatment to ensure that we continue to be below that level. Treatment at Station 5 right now is projected at $40 million. We don't have a choice in that. Another aspect is system capacity. We offline well in Stations 17 and 18, those are two stations that previously served Millwood. We offline those stations in 2019 in preparation of the Michigan MCL rules and regulations so that we would not be in violation of PFAS MCLs. We have not recovered that capacity. Some of this work in this capital plan seeks to recover that capacity. Capacity is not just our drinking water that we drank day in and day out, it's also for fire protection and needs of the whole system. So on the So on those hot August days and there's a fire, we've got the whole system that's got to be able to go. So from a long-term perspective, we've got to recover that capacity from Stations Seventeen and Eighteen, we've got to deal with new PFAS regulations, and we're going to have to invest some serious dollars in the system, some of which are reflected in the capital improvement program today, some of which are not.
Thank you, Director Baker. So not unlike every other commissioner sitting up here, it hurts to hear about increases like this, and the most concerned, you know, really the greatest concern that comes out is what about people who are of an income where this is going to hurt, this is going to make a difference? And I think talking, communicating is great. I think one thing that we have overlooked as a culture is that we've just gotten into the habit of just expecting, maybe until Flint, that water system just worked and we could turn our faucet on, we could drink out of it, hardly cost us anything, and we're all good to go on that. Well, this is a foundational life component that is, I think, the recognition is increasing about how foundationally important it is for us, and we need to make sure we have a system that is in line with our, you know, our attempts to develop resiliency here, to make sure that we are a safe and healthy community. And I'm going to have a little trouble saying to certain neighborhoods, you know, okay, we want to save a couple bucks on your bill, let's skip replacing lead service lines over there. I'm just going to personally have a problem with that. So as we've been doing all this talk in the Utility Policy Committee and here also, where my focus is in two areas, and that is, are we going to have a sufficient capability to help people who are really having trouble with their water bills? Because we got to pay for the system. And two, what are we doing on the side of things where we're helping people save how much water they're using? As a matter of fact, we've had water bills that come in because people's toilets are running the entire month, and then suddenly you get a bill for two, three hundred dollars for one month's worth of water. All those things that don't seem so sexy, I guess, like literally making sure your toilet tank is not running, making hard decisions about what things you are planting in your yard and how much you want to water things, I mean, you're paying the same amount for that, showerheads that save water, all those kinds of things. So we've got that program that we're going to be working with and an affordability program, and I think that is where we have to make sure we are doing a really good job of helping people who, we don't want people to lose access to water, but respect that water that we have and all that it takes to get it to your house and making sure that it's safe. So this is not, not easy, granted, and it's easy to sit around the room, even the Utility Policy Committee, and say, look at all this work that needs to be done, you know, let's, we are supportive of this. But then it comes here, and then, then it ends up being us that have to make a decision, and this is not, it's not an easy decision, and it's, it's kind of one of those, okay, fifty-two, forty-eight percent, you know, what's important and what am I going to go with here, what can I internally live with to defend? So we've had a great long discussion about this night. One thing I feel a little bit bad about is that this was just a presentation. The first reading on the proposed water and wastewater ordinances is at a regular meeting on December fourth, okay? So in some ways, I'd almost like to take this, put it on the video screen, and we can watch all this deep discussion, or, you know, we're going to be having that, and then we're actually, an action is requested from us December eighteenth. One thing we committed to because we started to lag on these water rate increases, longer you wait, the more cost there is, and so we got, we were talking about a further increase if we were waiting around to what, May, June before we do this? So that's another thing we committed to is timing, getting these increases set so they're consistent with our budget year, our calendar year. So that's why we're doing this for 2024, is trying to get this done before that time. Not easy. Welcome, my friend. And we'll just see, you know, what we can work out. I really think, and I hope this has helped you also, just preparing your thinking in terms of what is important for the community and for this commission, to help us be comfortable to set the stage for the tough decisions that we're going to have to make. And I can, I can tell you that in some ways, from my perspective, it's a little easier in the moment to say, okay, let's not increase rates. We're not going to get any unhappy emails or phone calls, just had an angry email today that I saw in email box about water that somebody was paying. If you don't increase rates, you're not going to hear that. What we then will not hear is, why didn't you do this, you know, five years from now, ten years from now, that sort of thing? So here we go, commission, as we head into our 2024 budget. Commissioner Wilson?
Thank you. That completes our presentation this evening. Thank you, Director Baker, great job.
Thank you again, Director Baker. We are now at the time, nothing else, right, so at the time for commissioner comments, commissioners? Someone like to start us off with any comments? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I just want to say thank you to the City of Kalamazoo for the opportunity to serve on the commission, and I look forward to learning from all of my colleagues here on the commission and working alongside you, so thank you as well.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Cooney?
Mayor, I'm very pleased that we passed that proclamation tonight against antisemitism. Michelle Serlin spoke eloquently and passionately, and she should not have to live like that, nor should anyone in this community have to live like that. And I know that already the chief has taken action on this, and we have to do everything we can, but it is not going to be us that are going to have to control this. It's beyond us. It is my hope and it is my belief that these are marginalized people, small group of people who are making these threats, and we have to isolate them and we have to stop them. So that, that's what I want to start off with. I want to say that speaking against antisemitism does not mean that people who are concerned about the slaughter that is taking place in Gaza have to keep quiet. It is possible to speak out for the lives of Palestinian people without speaking hate against the Jewish people. In fact, the two organizations that are leading this the most are Jewish Voices for Peace and, if not now, two Jewish organizations. The issue is human rights and the dignity and value of each person. Rabbi Mordecai, whom I know very well because we used to swim together, was generous in what he said, and his message to me was, it is better to light a candle than to curse the darkness. And to light a candle means that we speak out for the lives of every person, Palestinian, Jewish, every person. I think that is the way that we light. And for me, this is one of the great human rights issue of our time. And I think, I feel as Dr. King felt about Vietnam in nineteen sixty-seven, when he spoke out, not to speak out is betrayal. I think we have to speak out for the, to stop the slaughter that is taking place in Gaza, and we also have to speak out against the hate and the antisemitism that we see around
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Other commissioners? Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I want to say again, congratulations to Commissioner Wilson, to Commissioner Pedo, and Vice Mayor Hess. Definitely look forward to working with you guys over the next two years and everyone else that is on this dais that I've grown to care very deeply about. I just wanted to mention a few things in the consent agenda that we did pass today. We approved something for the South Side Park from Game Time and the ability to be able to purchase playground equipment for our, for our residents and for our children to be able to play. And also the approval of the thirty thousand dollars that goes to the Police Athletic League to be able to get transportation to get our youth as it goes into next year and beyond to keep them active and to keep them involved. And also the number fifteen, which was the grant from the Kalamazoo Alternative Housing Inc. When you think about energy efficiency and what that can do for our city, you know, here we are talking, you know, about our water rates, but then you also have to think about our electric rates and how they're just rising every day and every day. And I think with us approving this grant, it also comes into play that we do have a sustainability plan here within the City of Kalamazoo, and I think really delving into that some more, I believe we have a new gentleman named Justin Gish in our CPED team. I think that he's going to be instrumental also and helping us kind of bring some of those ideas to fruition when you think about alternative ways of, of energy. I'm glad to be here, and let's get to work. Fifty-fifth.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Pedo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations as well, as well, again, to Commissioner Wilson for joining us. I want to thank the citizens of Kalamazoo for the opportunity to serve for another four years. I genuinely, with every fiber of my body, love this work and love being a part of this group, and I really appreciate the chance to be here again. Just to kind of speak off of Commissioner Cooney and what he shared is that it is shocking to me that in 2023, that we're still grappling with some of the same issues like antisemitism or just the challenges that some marginalized groups in our, even our community in the world still face. And, you know, I talked about this at the previous meeting, but I genuinely believe the importance of this work is that when you see the polarization in the world and in our country, that even here at the local level, we have the opportunity to be a model and lead with integrity and lead with heart and show how this work can be done, right? Just wanted to lift that up and remind people that even in the smallest of ways, when you hear somebody speak something about some group or some individual, that we have an opportunity to make sure that that's unacceptable, and we share that that's not who we want to be as a community, that's not who Kalamazoo wants to be. And we can speak that truth as a commission. Second thing is, we have a big day coming up. Our official budget will be delivered on December first, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. So looking forward to that deep dive. I know we have a, I guess it's like a work group session or something coming up as well in early December to dive into that, but encourage the public to stay involved with that. Also wanted to thank the county for passing the Veterans Village. I know that's a really big deal for us as a community, and I know that kind of got us forgotten very quickly, but that is a very important step that we took as, as a county. Wanted to also thank the Clerk's Office for Clerk Borling and your team for all your work with the last election as well. You guys have a very heavy year coming up here in 2024, and appreciate all the work that you're doing. And then just to wrap up really quick, just want to wish my oldest boy, Lincoln, happy ninth birthday tomorrow. He usually tunes into these meetings and want to make sure he knows, wishing him a happy birthday. Thanks.
Yeah, happy birthday. Thank you, Commissioner Pedo. Vice Mayor Hess?
Sure. So four years ago, when we were first, when I was first sworn in, the biggest thing happening was candy cane gate, where, you know, we, the Parks and Rec had bought new candy canes and our inboxes were full. And that was far from the hardest thing that we had to do in the fifty-third and fifty-fourth commissions. We, we did COVID, we did Black Lives Matter, we legalized marijuana, we worked on GPI issues and the gun violence epidemic, we continued to work on housing and the housing crisis, we received an influx of ARPA dollars and had to decide where those went, all the way up to today's hate crimes. We continued to deal with these things, but we wanted to run and we wanted to serve. And again, I would like to thank Kalamazoo for, for putting me back here, and I appreciate your, your faith and your trust in me. And welcome, Commissioner Wilson. And I'm really happy to have Commissioner Pedo aside me here and Mayor Anderson there as well, along with the three returners. So that said, I, it makes me think of John Lennon. Imagine all the people living life in peace. So, yeah, I'll be your Pollyanna Vice Mayor, and I just want to let you know that positive thinking doesn't mean that you ignore the reality of the situation. It means that you have the optimism, the belief, and the faith to overcome the situation. As I look around the room out there, as I look at my community, as I look at the people around this dais, I have optimism and faith and hope that we can overcome any situation together. As a matter of fact, the flower that I wear is, was a gift from my husband for this evening for the swearing-in, and it means hope and new beginnings. These flowers mean hope and new beginnings, so I continue to have hope in what it is that we do. So hope and new beginnings, like Rick and Martha O'Million, right? Rick and Martha are the parents of Maggie Wardle, who was murdered on Kalamazoo College's campus in nineteen ninety-nine and, and by her ex-boyfriend, who then murdered himself. It was a horrible time on campus, and I was there, and I would not wish that on anyone. And Rick and Martha have turned their grief into hard work, hard work that came off today here in Kalamazoo at the YWCA, where Governor Gretchen Whitmer signed legislation for passing gun violence prevention, keeping guns out of the hands of criminals and domestic abusers to try and keep our communities just a little bit more safe. I want to thank Rick and Martha for their voices, to moms demand action, to students demand action, to anyone who has had to deal with the consequences of gun violence in our communities and in our state and in our country. So I have the optimism and the hope and the faith that we can deal with that, that we can overcome that, that we can work with that together. We all, we've all said it, that antisemitism has no place here in Kalamazoo, and that peace begins right here at home, starts here, right here in each one's heart, it starts right here, but it also starts in our neighborhoods, in our community, in our institutions, in our places of work. We are doing the work of the soul of Kalamazoo, and we're trying to make sure that this place is as safe as it ever can be. So I appreciate everybody's coming out and this meaningful day. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. So I want to have some thank you time here also, just to reiterate what I said at earlier meeting, is that depending how you measure it, whether you're talking about our active voter file or our total voter file, which does include some, a large number of inactive voters, somewhere between seventeen and twenty percent turnout for our, which is not unusual for our city election. Rather than focus on those that did not vote, I just want to say thank you to everybody that took the time. I think approximately sixty percent of people actually took advantage of voting absentee, which you don't have to have a reason to do, you can just even get on the regular absentee list or you get that ballot. So thank you to everyone that came. So thank you to everyone that came out and expressed their opinion by voting prior to or on election day in Kalamazoo. I also wanted to thank all the candidates. We have a candidate here, Jeff Messer, who attends every city commission meeting, and I want to thank all the candidates who also put in that time and effort to run for city commission. That's, it's not an easy thing to do necessarily, put yourself out there, participate in that, but thank you, candidates. I also feel that we, that people in Kalamazoo, when they're voting, it's a vote for hope, and it's a vote for commitment. And it's not necessarily a vote for people, but it's a vote for a desire that each one of us has in Kalamazoo, as people of goodwill, that we want to work together to build a community of opportunity for all. I neglected to do something tonight, which I should have, and that is that I always abstain on any item that might be in the consent agenda, which is related to something that I'm participating in, and I neglected to abstain on that tonight, and that was item G nineteen related to Kalamazoo Alternative Housing. I am a volunteer member of Kalamazoo Alternative Housing Board, and I should have abstained on that item. When the consent agenda items were voted on in a block, I, I received no reimbursement for serving on that board, I'm a volunteer member of that board, but I just wanted to make sure that that was noted. I'm sorry. Did I abstain? Oh, was it fifteen? I'm sorry. Yeah, G fifteen, not nineteen, G fifteen. Thank you, Commissioner Decker. A couple other things I just wanted to note is that it is interesting the connections we have. My daughter, as you know, was a student at Kalamazoo College when Maggie was brutally killed there. She happened to be here in the audience tonight, came from out of town and was able to be here for this event. She was the RA on the floor where Maggie lived. I have to say, it was hard to see Rick and Martha today with my daughter in town, who was there at the same time, and knowing that their daughter literally was murdered twenty-four years ago, and they've spent all this intervening time, twenty-four years, working on, on what they could do to try to limit access to firearms for individuals who are in a situation where they really shouldn't have that access. And, and a small incremental step forward that we were able to recognize here in Kalamazoo today with the governor here. And, and I have to say, it's, it was hard to celebrate that, recognizing, you know, the ongoing harm that occurs, I can't remember what the statistics were now, related to that, I think it's pretty high, women that are killed with firearms are basically killed by partners or ex-partners. An astounding discouraging statistic. So thank you to Rick and Martha for your continued efforts and your devotion to those things. We have had a couple strong, high-profile community leaders who have passed away just in this last week or so. One of them was Barbara King. Barbara King, big-time community leader, strong person. Another one of those black women in town, been around for a while, who's, does regular work, but as it turns out, is in the first category. And she was the first black registered nurse in Kalamazoo County, passed away at the age of ninety-three just recently, mother of Doug King, who's the president of Isaac here in town, who has spent many evenings with us. And also a brother, sister to Lola Atkinson, who's, you know, very involved in NAACP, but president there for a long time, just how families are connected here in town. And that was, that was a moving event, but another one that's coming up is for Ruthie Walker, who is married to Moses Walker, another, I mean, profoundly influential power couple here in Kalamazoo. And she also had a first in terms of her employment, related to Upjohn slash Pfizer and Pharmacia. And she's passed, Moses Walker, her husband, who's, you know, there's a building named after him over at the Family Health Center on the corner of Patterson Drake Road, he was the early director there. And he passed three years ago, and now Ruthie Walker has passed, and there will be a recognition for her coming up later on this week. Of course, the generations move on, and we now have another first, we have, I think, the first Promise graduate, who is now here with us on the commission, and I'm hoping that's going to be, in essence, a first for the wave of Promise graduates who are also going to be here, committed to Kalamazoo, committed to caring about this city, and, and leaving and maybe coming back to work here in this community. Today, also, the twentieth of November is the Transgender Day of Remembrance. It is an annual, annual observance that honors the memory of people whose lives were lost in acts of anti-transgender violence. And that's an important, you know, with all the things going on, I wanted to make sure that on the day of, we recognize that. I'm really looking forward to working with everybody on this commission again for another couple of years, and caring together and working together is really what makes this job worthwhile, really means a lot. And our city team, Andrew Wilson, Tony Leal, Director Baker, Chief Boyson, I think, I don't know if DCM Lamb is still here, DCM Chamberlain, but all our city teams, six hundred and fifty people deep, that's how the work gets done. So thank you so much for all your efforts and caring every day. I love you, Kalamazoo. Yeah, I'm sorry. Oh, my goodness gracious. Look at the clock, I thought we were actually going to get out of here. I can still love Kalamazoo, so, well, I still love Kalamazoo, I won't stop that. Are we coming back after this closed session?
Yes. To adjourn.
To adjourn. We're coming back to adjourn. Okay.
Whatever the process you use.
Return for action.
So we got to return for action, is that what you're saying? We're not just coming back to adjourn?
No, we don't have any action, we're just direction.
Okay, so when we don't have action, do we still have to come back? That has been our practice, is that if we're just going to a closed session, we're, I mean, that has been our tradition, I don't, you're the attorney, so.
I don't want to disturb his tradition, we don't have too many closed sessions, and I know you have your own tradition on doing that, which is fine, and we don't have to come back.
Okay, so then generally speaking, our practice has been, and you can correct us going forward if that's not appropriate, we, we have adjourned our public meeting even when we go to a closed session, unless, because we cannot make, take any action in a closed session. So if we go to a closed session, we have to come out, then generally speaking, people don't stick around for it, but we come back and, and take that action. So then, that said, at least consistent with our previous practice, then I am going to say, I love you, Kalamazoo, we're adjourned, and we have a closed session. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into, into closed session.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. See, we're doing this as a team, everyone's helping me along. Supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We'll call. Okay. I can't move this along at all, can I? Clerk Borley.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Yes, but six please.
Yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney.
Yes.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes.